The other ones that I know of were.
Michael, we're on.
Will the council come to order? And will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson?
Present.
Oliver?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Hager Smith is absent. Mattingly?
Here.
Sutfin?
Here.
Watson?
Present.
We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and Councilman Watson will be leading us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start tonight with the consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda. Item A is the town council minutes for March 11th, March 18th, and March 25th of this year. We will be approving that item tonight. Item B is ordinance 2069, an ordinance to amend the town code sections 18109 and 24306 and add new town code sections 18109.1 and 24306.1 pertaining to waiving utility availability fees for affordable housing developments. We'll be introducing the ordinance tonight and scheduling a public hearing for May 13th. Item C is ordinance 2076, an ordinance adopting the budget for the town of Blacksburg, Virginia for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, ending June 30th, 2026, adopting the real estate tax rate and appropriating funds for the fiscal year. We'll again be introducing the ordinance and scheduling the public hearing for May 13th. Item D is ordinance 2077. This is an ordinance amending Blacksburg Town Code sections 18400, 2206, and 24601 to increase fees for water and sewer services and solid waste and recycling fees. We'll be introducing that ordinance and scheduling the public hearing for May 13th. And the final item is item E, which is Resolution 4B25, a resolution approving revisions to section 7.4 of the Town of Blacksburg Employee Rules and Regulations. And we will be approving that tonight. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutfin?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
We're now in the public hearing section of the meeting. We have essentially one public hearing, but three sections for it. This is for the consolidation of the erosion and stormwater management regulations. This includes ordinance 2061A, an ordinance to repeal existing town code sections 10100 through 10213 pertaining to erosion and sediment control regulations as part of adopting a new consolidated erosion and stormwater management ordinance. It also includes ordinance 2061B, an ordinance to repeal existing town code sections 18600 through 18629 pertaining to stormwater management regulations as part of adopting a new consolidated erosion and stormwater management ordinance. And finally, section 3, which is ordinance 2061C, an ordinance to amend the town code by incorporating the provisions of the Virginia Department of Environmental Qualities Model Erosion and Stormwater Management Ordinance into Town Code Chapter 10 at Sections 10100 through 10130. I think that was the longest description we've ever had for an ordinance, but we will begin tonight with the staff presentation.
And Coffey Howard will have the staff report.
Good evening, everybody.
Oh, there it is.
So, tonight we are recommending the adoption of the Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Program Consolidated Ordinance. The reason why this is all coming about, it starts at the state. The state has adopted a new Stormwater Erosion and Stormwater Management Act, which requires all localities to consolidate their ENS and stormwater programs. And so, this is the town's effort to follow through with that requirement. So, as the long description of the ordinance requires, we have to repeal two ordinances so that we can adopt this new consolidated ordinance. Chapter 10 is mainly the erosion and sediment control ordinance currently. Chapter, portions of chapter 18 is the current stormwater management ordinance. And those both need to be repealed before we can then adopt a new section, chapter 10, which would be the consolidated ENS and stormwater ordinance where everything is combined. Okay. So, why consolidate? Both these programs, the ENS and stormwater, they manage stormwater. ENS is for during construction. Stormwater is after construction. So, it is, it creates a better and cohesive program when we have them together in the same language. Our program is more cohesive going through during construction and then through the life of projects. So, this whole consolidation really does provide a more unified program for the town. So, we have a few notable changes. One is our change to our land disturbance threshold. Now, our current land disturbance threshold is at 5,000 square feet for everything. And we're keeping that same threshold for erosion and sediment control. And we're keeping that same threshold for water quantity. We are relieving our threshold up to 10,000 square feet. So, we're moving from 5,000 to 10,000 for water quantity controls for small sites that would fit into this section, this kind of window of square footage. We have, we are also providing an exception and some provisions for agreements in lieu of for a single duplex site. These are, one, duplex residential structure outside and inside of a common plan of development. And really, these two changes puts the duplex in a very similar place as a single family home. So, they have very similar footprints and very similar impacts. So, prior to this, they were regulated in much, duplexes were regulated at a much higher threshold, a much stringent standard. So, it puts them in line with a single family house. Other changes that we're proposing are mainly administrative cleanup. We are deleting some sections where we have duplicative language with the state code. In those instances, we're just referencing the state code so we can be as consistent as possible where our standards, where we want our standards to be consistent. In other areas, we are simply just updating our technical guidance. Our current references, our current code references, a stormwater management handbook, 30-year-old ENS handbooks, 10-year-old references of stormwater requirements, and a BNP clearinghouse that are being phased out from the state. So, our new code will reference the new most current specifications for these provisions. So, through this process, we've had lots of public involvement. Starting in July, we presented in a work session talking about our stakeholders group recommendations. We had a work session in August discussing the options for our land disturbance threshold changes. We also talked and presented to council some draft language for our ordinance when we had a draft of the consolidated ordinance to provide to you guys. After that, we did meet with the Newver Valley Home Builders and took in their input and then came back to council for two additional work sessions in December and March to provide any follow-up and a few tweaks that we made to our recommendations. So, we are recommending the approval of this ordinance tonight, but we are also recommending that it become effective on July 1 of this year, of 2025. And this is to be as consistent as possible with the newest requirements the DEQ is putting forward. Right now, developments can use two different criteria. They can still use some of the old criteria up until July. But after July, on and after July, they are all required to use the new criteria. So, if we were to have the ordinance adopted today, we would have to have additional language referencing both criteria, which we did not want to do. It's much cleaner for us to just reference the new stuff that's going forward and to have our ordinance effective when everything is just on one standard. So, that concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I heard from a couple of constituents who raised concerns over the increase of that threshold from 5,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. Can you talk a little bit about why staff is specifically recommending that change?
Absolutely. The sites that fit into that 5,000 to 10,000, they're small sites. These sites have a very difficult time installing something onsite that is going to provide any meaningful benefit for water quality. Most sites that fall into that category buy nutrient credits anyways. So, but it is a cost that if we're not getting any onsite improvements, we might as well help provide a lesser, a lower threshold to allow them to have more developments that fall into that. We don't have that many, but there's, there's a sweet spot for developments and how much they can spend on their projects. And so, this is a way to provide some flexibility without sacrificing water quality.
Wonderful, thank you.
Could you say that again? That last part, it, I mean, at the end of the day, it's still protective of the environment.
It is protective.
Both during the construction.
That is correct, because they'll still have to see, meet all ENS requirements. So, any onsite issues will be met on the smaller sites, but it's those permanent water quality measures that won't be required for those 5,000 to 10,000 square feet.
Right.
To be clear, a 10,000 square foot lot is less than a quarter of an acre.
That is correct. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public here today that would like to speak about ordinance 2061? Please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your speaking time to three minutes.
Gavator Benizhar. This evening, I would like to read you a slightly different version of what I presented to you yesterday in a letter. One of the proposed changes in ordinance 2061 is to raise the disturbance threshold for post-development water quality control from 5,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. Since this issue was first presented to you, several changes have been made. Fortunately, the threshold for erosion and sediment control and as well as post-development water quantity remain unchanged. I appreciate your opposition to the staff's recommendation to adjust the threshold for post-development water quality as well. This threshold adjustment contradicts the town's comprehensive plan, which emphasizes the protection and preservation of our stream and water quality for, from further degradation. At one point during your work sessions, I've been present to him, you considered changes to the nutrient credit criteria, but that positive initiative did not materialize. In the absence of that change, it is difficult to understand why you would even contemplate altering the post-development water quality threshold. The key question for you is whether this change will impact water quality, no matter how slight. If the answer is yes, and I strongly believe it is, then you should reconsider approving the threshold change. It is clear that developers would welcome this proposed adjustment. And public involvement there was an interest group, not public. I want to clarify that I'm not opposed to development. My concerns often differ from yours based on the scope and magnitude of development, particularly in light of our current infrastructure, rather than the concept of development itself. Some of you have expressed similar views and emphasize smart and sustainable growth during your campaigns. Yet, your votes have reflected a different direction. I hope those voting in a few months will keep this in mind. Again, I urge you to consider the comprehensive plan and the sustainability issues that Blacksburg claims to uphold when deciding on this threshold change. As I have stated on several occasions, merely placing frog statues near waterways and painting storm drain murals for educational purposes is insufficient. That's great, but it's not enough. The town must genuinely embrace the principles it seeks to promote.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on ordinance 2061?
Hello, my name is Gwyneth Homer, and I live at 222 Price Street in Blacksburg. In recent years, national water quality standards, including the Clean Water Act, have been dismantled or otherwise weakened, limiting the jurisdiction of federal and state agencies such as the DEQ and the EPA. These changes were not due to scientific sustainability or public health recommendations, but rather by lobbying from high polluting industries. And in the past two months, we've witnessed the federal departments and programs being gutted, scientific studies being suppressed. And those who work for those already limited, you know, hampered environmental agencies are expecting to be next on the chopping block. It's easy to watch all of these changes with dismay. However, even if we may not be able to influence things at a national level, it's still our responsibility locally to increase water quality and implement pollution controls. As others have mentioned, the two main water bodies, or waterways in Blacksburg, Toms and Surboles Creek are both impaired. And we may not have largely recognized polluters like concentrated animal feeding operations, manufacturers, our mining operations within our town limits. But the other major contributors to water quality degradation are chemical and sediment runoff from roadways, chemically treated lawns, construction sites, and other impermeable surfaces. In addition to carrying toxins that contaminate the water, sediment irritates the gills in the skin of fish, which makes them susceptible to suffocation or infection. It also absorbs sunlight, which increases the water temperature, which decreases the amount of dissolved oxygen. And even aquatic life aside, it just makes it a lot more difficult to clean the water for human use as well. So, tonight you vote on ordinance 2061. It's my understanding that this would increase the amount of land needed to be disturbed in order for it to really qualify for the same amounts of sedimentation and erosion control. And, you know, as local officials, you hold the unique position and responsibility to kind of hold the line. So, where state and federal regulators are kind of having their rights taken away, we can hold our water to a higher, higher quality standard. And so, I hope you will keep this in mind. The presentation was very informative, and so I feel like I have a better understanding now than I did when I wrote this. But I just hope that you keep those things in mind when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. If you're still in public comment, would anyone else like to speak about ordinance 2061? Seeing none, we'll go ahead.
We're speaking, we can ask you guys questions and stuff too, right? It's not just like we say something and present it, is that correct? Or? No. Okay. Well, in that case, we're gravely kind of uninformed about the issue at hand. I've just moved here, so it's my first town council meeting, but nice to hear a little bit and catch up. I am interested and will be looking into post this. I'm curious, in addition to the environmental impacts, also economic impacts. So, you know, with Blacksburg, it feels like uniquely, we have a pretty inflow of students and also an influence of housing during certain parts of the season. And with Virginia Tech's like 2050 plan and that, you know, doubling the enrollment, obviously, that's going to lead to a lot more housing and pressure on our local infrastructure. So, obviously, environmental concerns are a paramount concern. But another thing, of course, that I'm sure you guys like it all the time is with the economics, not only for the students coming in, but locals as those prices are pushed up by that external force. So, I'd be curious to look into and will be looking into and curious to hear about. Maybe you guys have statements on it. I can find just economic impacts of not only this measure, but similar golf measures. Thanks.
Could we get your name and address?
Kayden McNamara, and my address is 3110 Meadowbrook Drive in Blacksburg. So, over in that little mobile home community over there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. My name is Steve Gillespie. I live on 201 Fairfax Road, South Main. I just want to underline and underscore and reiterate what the previous three speakers have come to say. I don't think when you are looking at the interests of developers for the kind of housing that we, that we want and weighing that against what was termed the minimum benefits of the raising the, or doubling the 5,000-foot threshold, I'm not sure that that got the right balance. I'm not an expert in this, but I think that more attention needs to be paid by the town administration and the planning committees and the, and the council about the environmental effects, particularly in the national and state political climate. Environment has always gotten short shrift, and now it seems like it's even more tightly under attack than ever before. So, I just want to make sure that council is aware that folks in town, while we do need some relief to make things easier for developers to build the sorts of things we want built, that shouldn't come at the cost of our environmental standards and regulatory safeguards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We will go ahead and close public comments on ordinance 2061. For this, we'll be taking action on all three sections simultaneously. What is council's pleasure on ordinance 2061, parts A, B, and C?
I move approval of ordinance 2061A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
I guess my question is whether or not staff had any further comments in response to the public? If, if, if they wanted to, I don't want to say rebut, but just probably provide additional information?
I know our, our current code can be a little confusing. So, I did want to provide some clarity from some of the feedback I heard. I wanted to make it clear that any subdivisions that are created, those would automatically require stormwater management and erosion and sediment control. These 5,000 to 10,000 are really one-off, very small developments. Large-scale developments that would have real significant impacts would still have all of our current standards. And Blacksburg is still quite more stringent than the state. The state's land disturbance threshold is 4,300 square feet, sorry, 43,000 square feet, which is an acre. And even at 10,000 square feet, we are still significantly more restrictive than the state. So, I think that we do value it. We are just trying to provide some flexibility where we can without impact to our water quality.
So, talk to me more about the nutrient credits. So, when these developers are building on this lot that's 5,000 or possibly 10,000 square feet, if they can't onsite build something to manage water quality moving forward, they'll buy a nutrient credit. And what does that, what does that entail?
It is simply buying so that water quality can be performed somewhere else, and it is not going to be in Blacksburg. So, these nutrient credits are a method that they can purchase some action in the watershed that's going to be downstream from us so that the water quality measure can be done there. So, these small sites don't have the space for an onsite BNP, and they 99% of the time choose to buy nutrient credits anyways, simply because of the space availability. So, we're not seeing those benefits either. But they are done in, you know, Carroll County or in more rural areas where some, there's more land to do these water quality benefits.
So, the person building the house here in Blacksburg would be paying to improve water quality elsewhere, right?
That is true, but it would be a single house that would have the freedom to do this. A subdivision, anything that is actually more lots than exists today would have to do it onsite. Most, you know, almost every subdivision in town has to do water quality onsite. It's really, that allows us for small commercial sites that are like a tiny, you know, expansion to a drive-through or something along those lines, something very small.
So, we're not cutting developers a break here?
No, the standards aren't really changing for developers at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks.
We're still in council discussion? Any more discussion?
I would just like to add that the staff has been working on this for months and months and months. While this came in a beautifully succinct and well-presented presentation, this has been, I can't even remember how many work sessions we've had and how many months of thought and research has gone into this. This was very well thought out, and just want to assure the public that that was, this is, did not come to fruition quickly, that this was thoroughly researched.
And I gotta say, I'm exceptionally grateful for the move to put duplexes in the same category as single-family homes and give those the same exemptions that are currently guaranteed by the state. So, I appreciate that. I think that'll have a really positive impact on the future of duplex development in Blacksburg.
Any other council discussion?
I want to add something, because I mean, what the citizens have brought up is important. You know, our aspirations for, you know, protecting the environment and the assault at the federal trickle-down to state level has been very bad. You know, in the, having worked in the environmental arena, when it comes to regulations and controls and protecting the environment, part, part of the balance always, because this is the society we live in, is kind of the cost-benefit. If money was no object, you would, we could require at every control, at every factory, everything, we could require to where no one put any pollution out. But a lot of times, what happens with trying to manage and limit pollution, you know, you, you may be able to spend X number of dollars and get 75% of that pollution removed, right? But to get that last 25%, you're going to spend way to, you know, orders of magnitude more money. So, it's always that balancing act. What is the best achievable, you know, or maximum achievable control technology? And I think that's what we're dealing with here too. At the end of the day, it's, it's, these are very small sites. Most of our standards still apply. And the, the amount of money being spent is really achieving a very marginal improvement. And so, I mean, that's a balance. I think I personally, and I feel my colleagues to some degree, we're on the same page. We'd like to have 100% control everywhere, but the reality is, you know, the cost, you know, these would be maybe infill places in already developed areas. So, it's a really hard thing to struggle with, but from just the cost-benefit and what you could achieve, I think this strikes a reasonable balance. We are still exercising our ability to be more stringent in some ways than what the state, you know. So, you know, is it perfect? No, but I think it's, it's, it's much better. It's going to be easier, I believe, for people to comply by combining these as the state's required. And I think it's going to be easier for our staff to administer as well. So, I think it's, it's, overall, it swings to, to the better good.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ford?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutfin?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
The motion passes. We will now move on to citizen comments. This is the portion of the meeting where I invite members of the public to come forward, state your name and address, and speak for three minutes about any topic of your choosing in the town of Blacksburg. in the town of Blacksburg. Okay, we will go ahead and close citizen comments. Appointments, we do have one appointment tonight of Captain Tubert as the town representative to the New River Valley Alcohol Safety Awareness Program. Do we have a motion on that?
I move that we appoint Captain Tubert as town representative to the New River Valley Alcohol Safety Awareness Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
The motion passes. We will move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business tonight? Moving on to new business, and we do have one item, the introduction of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 recommended operating budget, and we have a staff report.
Yeah, and I'll provide you a brief introduction of the budget that's been prepared for you all to discuss over the next month or so. We've done things a little bit out of order this year. We actually covered a lot of the details in the budget at the work session last week, and even though we're formally introducing the budget tonight. The document will be available on the town's website as soon as tomorrow. It'll also be, it's in the clerk's office for review, and we'll have a copy at the public library as well. And the budget, just to sum it up, it's a pretty, it's a pretty routine budget this year. Nothing major, no major changes. We are funding some new things, and I'll talk about that. We are, you know, able to continue to provide all the services that the citizens expect and provide those, you know, and deal with the inflationary cost increases, continuing to implement the council's strategic goals that you all set every two years at your retreat. And then also, we're obviously paying attention to what's going on in the economy and cost increases that the town is seeing, just like everybody else is going to be seeing. So the total budget, you know, all the different funds is proposed to be $108 million. If you look at what that is compared to last year's budget, with capital and debt included, it's about a 3% increase roughly. We like to take, subtract out the capital costs because those vary widely from year to year. If you subtract those out, compare apples to apples, it's just over a 5% increase overall budget, all funds from last year. And the budget's broken up, as I said, into different funds. The general fund, where most of the town services are provided and typically funded by tax, mostly tax revenues. The general fund is about 53.4 million, so about half of the total budget. And then our transit fund, which operates our Blacksburg Transit System, is about a quarter of the budget, and that is funded by, primarily by state and federal grants. There's a Virginia Tech student fee, and then there's a contract with the town of Christiansburg. There are some other smaller revenue sources that are used to fund the transit system. And then our utility funds are, they're a little bit less than a quarter of the overall budget, and that's our water and sewer system, our stormwater system, solid waste and recycling programs, and our stormwater utility are all included in that category of utility funds. And those are all funded by user fees, so there's no tax dollars that go into, no local tax dollars that go into fund the transit fund that comes from state and federal money, and then there's no tax dollars that go into fund any of those utility funds. So that's the basics of how our budget is organized. If we look at the general fund, as I said, where most of the services are provided from the general fund budget, I said, like I said, it's about half the budget, 53, just over 53 million. And if you compare apples to apples to last year's budget, it's just over a 4% increase from last year, which is pretty consistent with the cost increases that we've been seeing. We are, the property tax rate remains at 26 cents, there's no changes to the property tax rate. There's no reassessment this year. We are projecting some moderate revenue growth in all of our main revenue categories, so we'll see slight increases in the real estate tax, primarily just from new construction coming online. And then we'll also see increases in meals, lodging, and sales taxes, and these are, these are revenues that are based on what's going on in the economy. And as you know, there are, for example, the meals taxes are a percentage placed on your meal. When you go out to eat at a restaurant, everybody knows who goes out to eat that restaurant meals cost more, so that percentage of that is going to be more. So that's where some of those increases are coming from, is a lot of them are inflationary costs that are leading to more revenue coming into the town. This is just a list of some of the things that are either changing from last year or kind of notable, kind of new expenditures in the budget. So we are putting some money into our affordable housing initiatives through waiving water and sewer connection fees, so that's a cost that the developers don't have to pay. But because our water and sewer fund is set up as an enterprise fund, it's funded exclusively by user fees, we can't subsidize that from the water and sewer funds. So what happens is we have to pay those fees out of the town's general fund. So the general fund pays, essentially subsidizes, pays for that subsidy, but replaces that revenue into the water and sewer fund. We are including our funding for the New River Valley Passenger Rail Authority for the, to start the, or pay our share of the construction of the rail station. That construction's already started. There's an official groundbreaking coming up here later this month, and hoping Passenger Rail Service should start in 2027 to Christiansburg. So the town, so several things that are regional, we're going to be contributing to in this budget. We're going to be paying for our share of the new emergency services radio system that the 911 authority is going to be taking on. So the debt payments for the capital costs for all the equipment, the towers, all those sorts of long-term costs are included in this next year's budget. The following year, we'll actually, we'll actually start paying for radios once the system is built out. So we have plans to do that in the following year budget. We're a member of the New River Valley Regional Commission. They're moving into new office space. They're actually purchasing an office where they rent now, but they're going to purchase an office in Christiansburg and renovate that building. They're actually getting a really good deal, but the town's, the town's paying a portion of that debt over a 20-year period, and that's done based on a formula, the same formula it's used to fund the regional commission. So the town of Blacksburg and then all the surrounding counties and towns in the city of Radford will all be contributing to that project. We established a behavioral health co-response program in our police department in the past year. The first year, we had a good chunk of funding for that that came from state grants. We're not sure if those state grants are going to come in or not this year, so we went ahead and funded the full cost of that program in our budget. So that'll, that program will continue. If the state grants come, then that'll just be, that'll just be money that we don't have to spend next year. A few, just a few capital projects to highlight, too. We are, we've had a working group that's worked over about a year and a half on the Satan Luca Notfellows Hall restoration. Susan Anderson served on that group with some stakeholders and some members of the community that had relatives that were members of these organizations, and it's been a good project to work on. And we have a $187,000 capital project to do restoration work to that facility. We'll probably add a little bit more money to it because we want to do some, some things with some of the paint inside that'll, that'll really make it look good. So that's a, that's a project that's funded next year. We're going to do some smaller athletic field upgrades in the next budget, leading up to more major athletic field upgrades here in about two or three years. But we're going to do some, some smaller upgrades this year. We're going to do a skate park expansion. We have funding to hire consultants to assist the town in taking, taking a look at our zoning ordinance and rewriting, you know, kind of whole sections of the zoning ordinance. That'll be a big project that takes over a couple of years to get done, but we're going to get that started next year, and we have funding for that. And then in the transit fund, we're continuing our transition to electric buses, and we already have 10. We have 18 additional electric buses arriving this fall, and then we'll be adding some on-rout charging systems, and that'll, those will be in the new transit center that just opened. So we'll be able to charge, top, kind of top off the buses, the electric buses at the transit center. So those are just some highlights of some things that are different from previous years in the budget. Personnel and benefits, you know, inflationary costs, we, you know, our biggest cost in the budget is personnel and benefits. You know, all of the services we provide are provided by people. So we are including a pay increase for our employees this year, both cost of living and then a step increase after a performance evaluation. Good news on the benefit front, for the third year in a row, we don't have any health insurance increases, and that's no increase to the town for that benefit, but also no increase for the employees out of pocket. So that's the first time I've been here in 30 years. We've had multiple years in a row with no increase. And then there's not an increase in the Virginia retirement system rate this year either. That's a rate that's set every two years, so we'll have a rate increase next year. They typically base the rate on what the stock market is doing in the middle of the summer the year before, so they'll base that on what's going on in the stock market this July. So I could, I would expect we're going to have an increase probably next year, but we'll see how that goes. We are adding some, recommending some new positions in the budget, a couple in the finance department, an accountant position to assist with all of our just general accounting functions at the town, a buyer, which would be in our, in our purchasing division. We've had a two-person purchasing staff for a decade plus. Their workload has increased significantly, and they manage all the contracts, do all the buying for the town, so this will be a position to help there. We're adding an accounting specialist in the transit department to assist with purchasing and accounting types of functions. We're adding two mechanic positions in transit, and these will help replace some, some things that are contracted out currently. We'll be able to do those with in-house people. And the market, we should be able to hire mechanics now for a while. We had a really hard time finding them, but we feel like we can, we can find people to hire now. And then we're adding a couple of, taking a couple of part-time data, entry and data analysis positions in Blacksburg Transit, and we're going to convert those to full-time, and that'll create more stability in those positions. We'll be able to keep people for longer. And then reclassifying, we have a budget, we currently have a budget analyst position that's open. We're going to reclassify that to a budget manager, so it'll be a slight increase, hopefully be able to attract somebody that's got a good skill set to assist the town with our budget and capital improvement program process. And then we are also adding a full-time maintenance specialist in parks and recreation, and what we're doing there is we're taking two part-time positions and combining them into one full-time position, and that will allow more stability in that position. So those are what we're proposing with personnel and benefits and new positions. Looking at utilities, and this is in the water and sewer fund, solid waste and recycling fund, and then our stormwater fund. So we are projecting increases in the water, both the water and sewer rates of 5%. These are due to inflationary cost increases. Of course, the, we have a water treatment plant that's an authority we're a member of, and a sewage treatment plant that's also an authority. Their costs are going up, their cost of electricity, cost of materials and supplies, all those, those things are being impacted by inflation. Their labor costs are going up as well. And then the fixed rate is a small piece, but that's, that's the cost of the town actually doing the billing. And then the other piece of the water and sewer rates is the town's cost to maintain our water and sewer distribution systems, and those are housed in our public works department. So all those things go together, and we're expecting a 5% increase in both the water rate and the sewer rate. Solid waste and recycling, we're going to see about a 3.7% increase there. We didn't have an increase last year, so this is, we haven't had an increase in a while, but, so we're expecting that rate to go up about $1.17 per month. This is from, cost increases from the waste hauler, but also cost increases to the tipping fee at our solid waste authority. We're not proposing any changes to the stormwater rate. And all these utilities, we're going to, over the next year, we're going to do a rate study to do some long-term planning, looking at what our capital costs are going to be, looking at the authorities that we're members of, what their capital costs are going to be, and then we'll be able to project out rates for the long term. But if you look at the average utility bill, it's about a four, roughly a 4.5% increase for the average customer. Now, our average customer, we project 6,000 gallons a month of water use. Most people use less than that, but that would be about $6 for a family that uses 6,000 gallons of water in a month. So this is where we are in the budget schedule, so we've already covered the details at the work session. Tonight, we're doing the kind of formal introduction of the budget. Next week at your work session, we'll review the agency requests, and these are the requests from nonprofit organizations that the town provides funding for to provide public services. A lot of those organizations came and presented at your last council meeting to make their case for funding. And then we have a couple of other work sessions scheduled if we have more discussions that's needed. We'll hold the public hearing on the budget on May 13th, and then we'll consider adoption of the budget on May 27th. So that's the, that's the schedule, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have. And this will be online for the public to review tomorrow as well.
Any questions for Mark? Thank you. We'll now move on to council announcements, and I did want to mention two things, although the mayor's out of town and couldn't be here tonight. I did want to mention that she has approved two different proclamations. One is for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is April 13th through April 19th, and the other is Arbor Day for April 26th, and those proclamations encourage us all to celebrate those days. Any other council announcements?
I'd like to let people know that our annual Take Back the Night at Virginia Tech will be this coming Thursday, April 10th, 7:00 p.m. It will, should take place hopefully at the outdoor stage on College Avenue, you know, where Henderson Lawn is. The weather forecast looks a little iffy for Thursday at the moment, and so if it's terribly raining, they are moving the rally into the Graduate Life Center. So do come out to the front of the Lyric, and if you don't see anybody, go to the Graduate Life Center. Again, it's to raise awareness of gender-based and sexual violence. The students do a really good job on this, and please do come out and support them.
I just wanted to announce that the town is currently receiving public comments regarding the 2025 Annual Action Plan and Citizen Participation Plan for the Home and Community Development Block Grant Programs. That's the HUD money that we use for affordable housing. They'll be having an actual public hearing for people to come and speak about it on Wednesday, April 16th. All of the specific information about this can be found on the Blacksburg website at the latest news section, and I'd encourage folks to provide comments about that. It's good, good work what they're doing, and we should be supportive of that.
I want to thank Javad Torbenejad for this nice reminder, but the National Weather Service is warning of a deep freeze tonight, so if you have a flower bed or a vegetable garden or a newly planted fruit tree, in my case, you'll want to cover those up tonight and protect them from the freeze that's coming.
Any other announcements? Our next council work session will be April 15th in the Blacksburg Motor Company Building, and our next regular meeting will be April 22nd in these chambers, and with that, I believe we are adjourned.